To the special meeting, the statement by the president, mission statement, roll call, flag salute. And public participation interview. A session. So, a statement by the president. Tracy, can you?
Can we pass that out?
Okay. Thank you. All right. In accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4, 6PL 1975, C231, S1 amended 2006, C70S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and Coaster on October 31st, 2024 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on November 1st, 2024. Mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Dr. Matu?
Here.
Dr. Penna?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Thank you.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Asbury Park Board of Education. I stand for our nation's justice for all.
Okay, folks. Before we start, I did wanted to say congratulations to Mrs. Ricks on being re-elected, right? And also to Mr. Lotaraka and Ms. Ackerman for being elected. So, congratulations. I said it before, but no. Now we all come together for the kids, and so appreciate everyone being here. What's that?
Also recognize that both schools were our opponent. Our opponent recognize and to encourage.
I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, so we can, I'll say it by name, Dr. Shadé Matu, and Marielle Soria Flores, who is not here, and Ms. Danielle Brasco, who said she was going to show up a little later and say a couple of words, I think. But on their behalf, yeah, thank you for running. It's always really difficult to do something like that, do yourself out there. So, thank you all. Okay. So, what we'll do is open up public participation. Did you want to, did you want to just explain kind of why we're having a special meeting?
Yeah. No, you can hear me. The reason that we're here is to fill a vacancy that was created when the Commissioner of Education, in response to a, an ethics, a school ethics commission recommendation regarding board member training, have removed a board member on, in a decision that was issued on September 4th and mailed on September, September 5th. According to the statute, the board has 65 days, which would be November 9th, in order to fill the vacancy. The vote for it to fill the vacancy would be by a majority of the members remaining on the board. The 45 days, there's 45 days to appeal that decision. That date was October 20th, 2024. And the position that will be filled by statute will be up until the reorganization meeting in January of 2026. Because the statute says that the person will be seated at all through the second election following the creation of the vacancy. Since the vacancy was created in September, election number one was November of 2024, this Tuesday. Election number two is November 20th of 2024.
So, to be clear, whoever gets appointed would have to run next year for the position?
Yes, yes.
So, a one-year term?
Yes, yes.
And then they run for the full term?
Should they choose to, yes.
Should they choose to do that?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because I think there was an email that was sent out that said something differently, so I just wanted to correct that. Also, the board did not remove the board member. It was the New Jersey, the state of New Jersey that did that.
And I have the decision if you'd like to, if you'd like me to read it, or not?
Sure.
It's up to you.
Sure.
The Commissioner's decision is, in the matter of Anthony Remy, Asbury Park Board of Education, on counting the record of this matter and the decision of the School Ethics Commission, have been reviewed. The SEC found that respondent violated NJSA 18A 12-33 by failing to timely complete required board member training. The SEC's decision was forwarded to the Commissioner for final determination on the recommended penalty pursuant to NJSA 18A 12-29C. The SEC recommended a sanction of removal effective upon the adoption of the decision by Commissioner. The SEC noted that the respondent had previously been reprimanded for failing to timely complete mandatory training, as well as suspended for failing to timely file disclosure statements to date, and that would be as of September 4th. Respondent had not filed, had not notified the SEC that he has completed the required training. Respondent has neither filed exceptions to the recommended penalty nor instituted an appeal of the SEC's underlying filing of violation pursuant to NJAC 6A:4-1 and SEC. Upon review, Commissioner do curs with the penalty recommended by the SEC for respondent's failure to timely honor the obligation placed upon school officials by law. Accordingly, respondent is removed from the board for violating the School Ethics Act. I would also note that the board has not received any notification that there is a stay of this decision. What did you see?
All right. So, that being said, let's, let's open up public participation. I know we have a letter that Ms. Lizinski wrote in her absence. She wanted it to be read into the record. So, yeah, I'd like it to be read into the record. But before, before that, I'll read the public participation language. So, "In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session. All public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting." Okay. All right. So, we'll do the live focus first. So, anyone who wants to get up?
Good evening. My name is Nina Somlin. I retired 11/01 day exactly. Just to give everybody at that table a heads up, it ain't working.
Okay.
Just to give you a heads up, when you're speaking, please pull your mics up, because we can't hear you against that wall. So, when you're talking, it sounds like you have a mask on and you can't hear anything. So, for the rest of the board meeting, if you can either lean up to your mic or pull it closer to you so we can hear you, because we're missing a lot of what's being said, even the stuff that we just read, we couldn't hear it. But I'd also like to say congratulations to the candidates that actually won, and I'm letting everybody know, mic, whether it work or not, I have an oxygen machine and a defibrillator, and I'm coming for every last one of y'all to make sure you do what's right for our children in this district again this year. So, when you see me, just know I'm coming and I'm ready and I'm there. So, if anybody has to speak on the board, please pull your mics up, because we can't hear anything. And that machine over there take up most of the noise. So, I thank you and enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Somlin. So, everybody eat the mic, as they say.
Felicia 72 Avenue, Asbury Park. Just, plus, we couldn't, we really couldn't hear you back here. I just want to clarify, because one of the questions I was asking is that they will, the seat is not a two-year seat, they will have to run again next year?
Yes, it is a one-year seat, so they would have to run again next year, yes.
And congratulations to everyone and everybody that participated.
I'll need a microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can y'all use y'all outside voice inside? I know you're not supposed to, but this was the thing. Sheila Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Congrats to the board members, to Ms. Ricks. Congratulations. So, now that y'all on, let's do the right thing, continue. And I know people don't like this person, everyone don't like that one, all that, that's the past. We gonna move forward, okay? So, let's, let's all try to stop being dysfunctional, because you know, you had somebody from Neptune coming to Asbury, talking about how dysfunctional we are and how the way we spend our money, but I don't think it's dead or better than we are. But let's show them that we can all get along. We are people, because as far as we're saying, this United States is in the hell and hand back. So, let's let the board be the bigger people, people, okay? So, let all, we have our ups and downs with each other, but let's come together, as God should do, and family, and let's all just get along. I know we got some family you don't talk to, but sometimes you got to let all that stuff go. It's in the past, bring it, let's move forward. So, we hope that we keep moving this issue, keep educating our kids. It's about the kids, it's not about somebody that made this much money, that much money. If it's anybody's kids, then it's not, it shouldn't be about the issue. Kids come first, because you know, people, kids leaving, so if all the kids leave, we gonna need a board, because definitely, we're not Asbury Park School District, but there's no kids. So, let's all get along. Have a nice night. God bless the board.
Okay. Anyone else?
I understand.
All right. I'm going to close public participation. So, Ms. Lizinski's letter, we're going to read when everyone has their, their chance to say something.
Right. As part of board member discussion.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Is everyone else fine with that? Okay. All right. Okay. So, we are going to interview board candidates. There were five people that, that applied for the position, and how we're going to do this is, I emailed the board the four questions that we're going to, we're going to ask the same four questions to each of the applicants, same way we did it back in January, when we did this another time. And the way we'll do it is, I've got the names right here. We have your bios, we have your favorite color, we have everything. As we interview one candidate, the other candidates go outside of this room, and, and that's basically, each board member will just go do round robin like we did last time. We'll ask one of the questions, and, and you'll have two minutes to answer each question. So, so with that, let's start. So, first of all, all the candidates or all the, the advocates, if you can stand up. Okay, great. These are your five folks. We're going to start with Alex Mazenko. So, everyone else, if you can depart the room, and Mr. Mazenko. All right. Hi there, how are you?
Evening.
Yeah, I think it's better if you sit down, it's too important to miss anything. Well, John, the mic doesn't work.
The mic works fine.
Okay. So, why don't we do where, and I forgot to mention, you want to say like an opening statement, just one minute, and then we'll go through the questions, starting with Ms. Glassman, and then going this way.
Sure. So, thank you for the opportunity, Alex Mazenko, 1001 Second Avenue, Asbury Park. My soon-to-be husband and I moved here a year and a half ago. Really, I've always loved the community, but recently bought a home here, planted roots here, and I think it's important to give back to the community that you're a part of. This was one of the best ways I thought I could do it. I've done the job before. I was a past vice president, finance chair, and board member in Top server, facing some similar challenges as Asbury, especially with respect to S2. So, I think I have some experience and skills that I could bring to this board.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Glassman, I don't know if, I don't know if you heard me. We're going to go through the questions, we'll start with you, and we'll go up. So, for Mr. Mazenko, it'll be you, Dr. Matu, Dr. Penna, and Ms. Ricks. Start with you.
Start the first question.
I will start, you hear me now, pal?
Yes, okay. We'll start with the first question. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
So, not to belabor the point, but basically what I said in my opening, that I've done the job before. You know, my trade, a data analyst, and a manager of data analysts, so I have, you know, skills in the corporate world as well, and also have a lot of volunteer experience, already gone involved in the community, the treasurer of the Quads Club of Asbury Park, and just looking forward to getting more involved with the community and learning more.
Hi. Thank you for being here. I'm going to start with the first question. What do you see as the role of school board member?
So, there's of course like the School Boards Association definition to, you know, hire and supervise the chief school administrator and create the budget and implement policies, but I think more correlates to be a fair, honest, representative of the community, and to listen to the feedback from all stakeholders, whether it be the students who deserve a high-quality education, the teachers who deserve a great place to work, and the taxpayers who expect us to spend their money wisely.
Thank you.
Hi. What areas do you believe are the district's greatest challenges, and what areas do you believe are our most significant strengths?
The biggest challenge is definitely S2 and the cumulative loss of $36 million, and then the fact that you have to raise those funds elsewhere, and definitely earn the community a lot of confirmation about taxes going up. And I think engaging the community on the issue of S2, helping them to understand that this, you know, is not something of this board's making, but something we're getting handed down from the state, and getting them on our side to advocate for fair funding. We know the formula's one, and the war voices in Trent telling them that, you know, hopefully we'll bring back some change. You know, another challenge that's been alluded to tonight is the division, and I hope that after the election, you know, everybody can come together, as the speaker said. In terms of strengths, I think you see it right here, the amount of people that came out on a Thursday night to a special board meeting to hear board candidates shows that you're really engaging the community, encouraging people to come to board meetings and participate, and of course, the staff.
Welcome, and thank you for having the courage to apply to become a board member. My question to you is, what do you believe is the role of a school district in educating our children, especially with the challenges that we are facing now?
I think that it's to provide the most quality education and well-rounded education that we can, and that's not just what's in the classroom, but the extracurricular activities, making sure that, you know, the kids aren't going to class hungry, and, you know, making sure that the staff has the resources they need to have the best classroom environment for the students.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mazenko, as you go out there, can you ask Mr. Micos to, to come out, to come here?
That's where they are?
Oh, okay. It's like a game show. Robert Micos. Right over there, Mr. Micos.
Oh, I encourage the board members to use the valuation form, I'm actually not pretty used to it.
Okay. You'll have a minute, just as an opening statement, to introduce yourself, and then we will ask questions, you'll have two minutes to answer. So, you don't need to do the whole two minutes, by the way.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Micos. I've been in Asbury Park since 2002, part-time, weekends mostly during the summer. Since 2020, I'm a full-time resident here. I have 25 years-plus experience working in New York City Public Education. After I retired from the DOE back in 2022, I went to work at the Gay and Lesbian Center in Manhattan, giving back to my community, running their drug prevention program for youth at the center. I left there, because the community was a little rough, going back and forth to the city from Asbury Park, and am here full-time. So, I just retired again for the second time. I actually started a new job, if you can see though, at the New Jersey Prevention Network, working with schools in Bergen, Union County, and actually Hudson County, providing drug prevention in the schools in those three counties.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Excuse me. What is specific skills that you bring to the school?
So, in my 20-plus years working in the New York City Public Education, I worked at every level. I worked at the school level, where I was the magnet coordinator, we had a magnet grant that brought in students from across the borough, actually across all five boroughs. I was the math coach for the school, and then became the assistant principal of the school. That was part of my favorite job in the DOE, being the assistant principal. I got, you know, every kid in the building, it was the most rewarding thing I've ever done probably in my 20-plus years. Fortunately, we had a change in administration, so I went to the district level, where I worked as an attendance supervisor, so I did an attendance improvement program. I was the health coordinator for the district, and then I took over their prevention program. So, the prevention program is a substance abuse prevention program that we ran in the district, using evidence-based programs, which state-funded. My boss at the time, when I was doing the prevention program, was like, you should run the citywide program. So, he retired, and then I ran the citywide program for two years, overseeing a budget of $24 million. So, I had all levels at the school, basically from school to district to citywide. So, all those skills, including the overseeing of the budget, is what I bring to the board.
Okay. Mr. Micos, what do you see, are you mister or doctor?
Not a doctor, so.
Okay. Missing, making sure. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
I see it similar to being like a school leader. The first thing is you want to provide support, right? You're there to make sure that the kids in the district get the best education. For me, it was at the school level, then at the district level, then at the citywide thing. It's ensuring that every kid gets the best education possible. In addition, support, you want to support the administrators, the superintendent, and to have a certain skill set that can support all levels, from students to administrators to superintendencies, but also oversight, to make sure things are getting done properly.
Okay. We've run out of people. Ms. Glassman?
What areas do you believe are our district's greatest challenges?
I did some research on the district. It's academics. I think with academics, though, comes hand-in-hand, it's looking at the whole child. So, I have experience with academics, specifically math. I learned literacy while I was in the school, not a literacy expert, but I'm more of a math content expert. Looking at the whole child, and that's looking at all students, the social development, the social-emotional learning, and looking at all those things. I think they all tie together. So, academic support, we need to look at why students aren't performing well, like what are some struggles they're having at home or in the community that we sort of look at and target to make sure that they are successful at school.
Okay. Dr. Matu?
And here.
Yes.
Mr. Micos, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of school district in educating their children?
One of the reasons I came to do this, not because I was bored, it's being retired for the second time, was because of the political climate. I think they're taking kids, things away from kids, and not exposing kids to things they should be exposed to. When you whitewash curriculum, you don't talk about all aspects of LGBTQ+ communities, of people of color, and you start looking how we're whitewashing things, that's why I felt like I needed to step up and make sure that that does not happen in this district. We need to look at all aspects of history, everyone's contribution to the growth of this country, and make sure that we identify everyone that's involved in this country, making it a better country.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have to go.
Yeah.
Just so you know, don't pop back in. I told, I missed ground, I had to leave right after, so.
Yep.
See you again, but I'm very interested.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Since Mr. Micos has to leave, can someone?
I can go get him.
Oh, sure. Can you ask Mr. Remy to come out?
Okay.
Yes, he's in the, he's in the isolation chamber, whatever it is. What is it? Oh, the community isolation chamber.
Okay, missing, making sure. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
I see it similar to being like a school leader. The first thing is you want to provide support, right? You're there to make sure that the kids in the district get the best education. For me, it was at the school level, then at district level, then at the citywide thing. It's ensuring that every kid gets the best education possible. In addition to support, you want to support the administrators, the superintendent, and to have a certain skill set that can support all levels, from students to administrators to superintendencies, but also oversight, to make sure things are getting done properly.
Okay. We've run out of people. Uh, Ms. Glassman?
What areas do you believe are our district's greatest challenges?
I've done some research on the district. It's academics. I think with academics, though, it comes hand-in-hand and looking at the whole child. So I have experience with academics, specifically math. I learned literacy while I was in the school. I'm not a literacy expert, but I'm more of a math content expert. Looking at the whole child, and that's looking at all students, the social development, the social-emotional learning, and looking at all those things. I think they all tie together. So academic support, we need to look at why students aren't performing well. Like, what are some struggles they're having at home or in the community that we sort of look at and target to make sure that they are successful at school?
Okay, Dr. Monsu.
Can you?
Yes.
Mr. Mikos, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
We have just come through an extraordinary year with challenges no one could have foreseen. Education has become much more visible and much more political. What do you believe is the role of school district in educating their children?
One of the reasons I came to do this, not because I was bored as being retired for the second time, was because of the political climate. I think they're taking kids, things away from kids, and not exposing kids to things they should be exposed to. When you whitewash curriculum, you don't talk about all aspects of LGBTQ+ communities, of people of color, and you start looking how we're whitewashing things. That's why I felt like I needed to step up and make sure that that does not happen in this district. We need to look at all aspects of history, everyone's contribution to the growth of this country, and make sure that we identify everyone that's involved in this country, making it a better country.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have to go.
Yeah.
Just so you know, if you don't pop back in, I told the side of this ground that I had to leave right after, so you'll see me again, but I'm very interested.
Thank you very much, sir. Since Mr. Mikos has to leave, can someone, uh... Oh, sure. Can you ask Mr. Remy to come out? Yes, he's in the, he's in the isolation chamber, whatever it is. What is it? Oh, the community isolation chamber. Hi, Mr. Remy. If you could sit right over there. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Remy. Uh, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna do a one-minute, just an introduction, right? And then, uh, we're gonna ask four questions, and you'll have two minutes to answer each question. Saying to everybody, you don't need to take up the whole two minutes.
Okay. All right, well, uh, my name is Anthony Runney, eleven oh seven Comstock Street, Asbury Park in Jersey. And I'm here as an applicant for my seat on the Board of Ed. I corrected, I made a mistake. I corrected my actions. I did what I had to do. And I'm so happy to see other people applied for this seat, but I'm the only one out of everyone here that ran and did the effort, did the work, and got elected by the citizens of Asbury Park to represent and provide opportunities for the children of Asbury Park. Did a lot of work during my time here, my last four years. I still have a lot of work to complete, still have a lot to do. Still got project spending, everything's spending. And I felt as though during my time here, I was like the glue. Meshed and worked with everyone. I supported everyone here at this panel, one way or another. Whether I have to get the seat that you're sitting in now, whether I helped you vote on something that you needed, I supported. I supported. And all I'm asking is for, uh, to complete my term and finish what I started to do. I hope you guys see that, and I hope y'all feel it too.
Okay, thank you. Who's next to ask a question?
Hi, Mr. Remy.
Wrong, Dr. Bennett.
So what specific skills would you bring to the board?
Bring my communication skills, my people skills, um, the skills that I've been using all this time to bring you all together and, you know, just try to work together, team working. I'm the only one, I'm not even respectfully, I'm not trying to boast or anything, but I can go to every side of this town and bring everyone together. I see the vision. I don't have no hidden agendas, really working to provide opportunities for the children, just like the opportunities that I have. And I want to make them better than me. Want to keep them off the streets. That's how I see Asbury. Um, that's my skills. That's my skills. I got a passion for this. I got a heart for this.
Okay, Mrs. Ritz.
Hi, Mr. Remy.
Hey, Mr. Ritz.
My question to you is, what do you see as the role of a school board member?
The role of a school board member, um, for school members who work together, um, together, along with the superintendent, to execute the goals, the vision, the mission, of how we want our children to be successful and thriving. With a lot of spirit, a lot of pride. You know, no... No, just positive, just positive vibes, and just work and execute and provide a stable future for the children.
Okay, thank you. Tracy. Mr. Remy.
Go, Mr. Rogers.
What do you, what do you believe are the district's greatest challenges in areas, in areas where you believe are the children's greatest challenges?
The challenges, the challenges, obviously, with the financials, but, um, that's also how we get stronger and figure our ways to, you know, just continue to keep the lights on and continue to provide an education, regardless of how many, um, money we done lost during the time that I've, during the time that I've been here. No matter how much money we done lost, we always figured it out. So that's just front face. We all, I feel as though we all work together. We all mesh in a sense, even if we, you know, back there will, will argue bigger, but we still figure it out and make a way. The strength of this district is the pride. We're fighters. Can't knock us down. And that's why I'm here now.
Uh, Mr. Remy? Yes, Mr. Remy. All right, I've got one question for you here. What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
What do you, what do I believe is the role in the school district?
Of, of, of a school district, like, as a school district is all...
Um, creating a safe environment where they could learn, be creative. Everyone works together. We're all like neighbors. We're all neighbors, actually, honestly. We look out for each other. Keep every children safe. Keep your neighbor safe. If you see something, say something. Create like a family environment, like a family environment. We all can sit and teach. We have great teachers. We have great staff. We have great people in this district, families, everyone. We just gotta come together. And I feel like we've been working towards that, and I want to continue to do that.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
That's it?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Remy. Mr. Remy, uh, if you could, when you, before you leave, are you gonna stay, right? If you could call Ms. Clark to come out, all right? Thank you.
No problem.
Hi, Ms. Clark.
Hi.
Uh, what we're gonna do is, you're gonna, if you can make a brief opening statement, just one minute, and then we're gonna ask four questions. You got two minutes to each answer each question. Don't need to use all two minutes, so...
Hi, my name's Kristen Clark. I've been a resident in Asbury for about seven years now. I'm also an educator. I teach high school math in Long Branch. Uh, I've been in Long Branch for also about seven years. Prior to that, I taught in North Carolina for five years. That's where I started. Also as a middle school and high school math teacher. Um, in addition to being a high school math teacher in Long Branch, I am also, sorry. I am also president of our, the Long Branch School Employees Association, which is our union that represents over seven hundred employees in the district. Everyone from teachers to our secretaries, to our security, to, um, our custodians, buildings and grounds maintenance, everyone.
Okay, um, thank you. Ms. Glassman?
Hi. What specific skills do you bring to the board?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I think in my role as an educator for over a decade, I've taught in a variety of different schools. I know the importance, oh, thank you. I know the importance of having quality educators and quality staff and a community that works together for the best possible public schools. When you've got teachers and staff and families and the community heavily involved in schools, that's what turns them into the best possible place for our students to be learning and to succeed. And like I said, as an educator for over a decade, I know how to do that. Also, in my role as president of our union, I also know firsthand what it looks like when there is a good functional relationship between the Board of Ed and central office and all of the staff in the district. And that is how you create, again, the best possible public schools for our students.
Hi, Ms. Clark. Thank you for being here tonight. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
I think being a member of the Board of Ed is both a huge honor and a huge responsibility. These are the people that are making decisions that impact our students and our staff on a daily basis. And I think the role of being a member of the Board of Education is the bridge between the community and what's best for our students and for our staff. So it's doing the research, it's showing up to meetings, and it's making sure that you are well-versed in everything that's happening, both in the schools and with the policy that's being decided at every meeting, so that our students and our staff have the best possible place to succeed. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Clark. Uh, what areas do you believe are our district's greatest challenges, and what areas do you believe are our most significant strengths?
For the area of, um, maybe the greatest improvement, I would say, I, we all know it's definitely the declining enrollment. And with the declining enrollment, due in large part to all of the charter schools in town, it's also then a lack of school funding. Um, we know that Asbury Park has been hit very hard over the last few years. I, I mean, I think you guys just lost twenty percent of your state aid this past year, and over the last five years, it's been tens of millions of dollars. And that is because of the declining enrollment. If we could solve that problem and get students and their families and the communities to be invested in the public school system again and get these students back here, then that helps with the declining enrollment, which then also helps with the school funding crisis as well. Uh, I mean, I know Long Branch was hit very hard this past year with school funding, and I know that the board and the districts have very challenging decisions to make when they're faced with that. Um, in terms of, I think, the greatest strength, it's the community. This is an amazing turnout at a Board of Education meeting. I know in Long Branch, it looks nothing like this. So I think that community piece is the greatest strength, pulling people, pulling families and the community into the schools on a more regular basis to keep building up that partnership.
Thank you.
We are facing some very challenging times, and education has become more visible and more political. What do you believe is the role of the school district in educating the children?
The role of, like, the board or the district staff? All right. Um, I mean, I think, like I said, I've been an educator for over a decade. It's showing up. Obviously, you're teaching the curriculum. You know, I teach a tested subject in high school math. It's all those things that go into it. But more importantly, it's that when the students walk through that door, they need to know that they are loved and valued and respected by every single person in the building, from the central office administration, the principals, the teachers, the secretaries, the bus starters. Everyone plays such a vital role in making students feel welcomed in the school district. Because, you know, kids don't learn when they don't feel cared about. So I think that's where it starts, making sure that you've got a staff that is excited to be at work, they're excited to do their job, and they love the kids. And like, education's always gonna be political. Everyone feels differently about it. I mean, like, we just said, the school funding, that's political. But as educators, as staff in the district, I think our, the role of staff is to show up and love these kids and then teach them.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Clark, if you could, uh, ask Mr. Corrigan to come out. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Mr. Corrigan, what, uh, we're going to do is, uh, we're gonna allow you a minute to introduce yourself, give a little intro, and then we have four questions to ask you, two minutes answers for each question.
Very good.
And you can turn the microphone on.
Okay, um, first of all, I submitted a resume. Do you have it? Oh, that sounds like a no. So maybe what I'll do, I think what I can do, because I have the resume here, but since I have a minute as an opening statement, maybe I can do that as well. And then I will, as I'm doing that, I can, uh, distribute this.
Go ahead, distribute it, then you can start.
Okay.
We have, we have the bios, but I don't see yours. Thank you.
Let me see, I have, I think I have fifteen, okay. So if you haven't, if you haven't seen it, you don't know much or anything about me, so I'll give you the short version. I am seventy years old. I am retired. I was, um, I was born in Tom's River. Went to Notre Dame, then I went to Rutgers Law School. And then, for a very short period of time, I lived in Tom's River. But I got married, and my wife, um, was a teacher, and I was going to law school. So she was teaching in Tom's River, and I was going to law school in, in Newark. So where's the best place to live? Well, the best place to live for me and for her was in Asbury Park. So during the eighties, and I know this story, but, but from my perspective, Asbury was great. but from my perspective, Asbury was great. So I lived in Asbury for about eight years. And then, in addition to living in Asbury, I became a lawyer and I represented the city of Asbury Park. Now, what is interesting is there are a bunch of people here, right, tonight? But no familiar faces. I knew, and I even played cards with them. Sam Matio, Ray Chabell. I think Ray represented the Board of Ed. And Marty Chomsky. In fact, I liked Asbury Park so much, I was going to live there. I can't even tell you where I was going to live. And you may not know where this is, but I'll tell you because I remember it like it was yesterday. There was a donut shop on Sunset Avenue, which I don't think was there anymore, but there was a three-story house, and it was beautiful. But I was married and my wife wanted to have kids and she wanted, she put in Tom's River. So I moved out of Asbury Park. So I lived in Tom's River for, up until 2020, when I decided to slow down. My kid, I have two kids. My kids grew up. And so I was going to move out of town. Where should I move to? Where should we move to? Well, it's an easy one, right? Asbury Park. So I've been living in Asbury Park for three years. Somewhat surprising, but not bad, not bad at all. I became sick and I sense a fire. So I have plenty of time on my hands. So I got sick, but I'm better now. I have time to serve the community. I've represented boards of education. Now, I represent living. I recognize you have, I recognize you have at least one board attorney, probably a bunch of board attorneys. I'm retired. I'm not interested in being, I recognize the difference. I'm interested in being a board member.
Mr. Corrigan, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Very good.
But I really love your story.
I was getting to the best part, but we'll worry about that next time.
There are a lot of Tom's River connections today, right? All right.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We're going to ask the question, but I appreciate your story.
What specific skills would you bring to the board? Good morning, Megan Abner.
Well, some unique stories is I have substantial experience in representing urban boards of education. I am pleased to advise that in 1989, not that I agree with this from a policy perspective, but when the state of New Jersey took over the Jersey City Board of Education, the Commissioner of Education appointed our firm as general counsel. And we stayed as general counsel for about 10 years until they went back to normal control. And in fact, I can tell you, so I represented urban districts. You know, basically, my career is representing boards of education. And then I moved over, I changed fronts a little bit. Then I moved over to representing municipalities. And then towards the latter part of my career, I started doing individual whistleblowers and discrimination type of work. So that's, I think that that's a unique perspective. In fact, I can tell you, let me just tell you one story. One time I was interviewing a, I was interviewing with a board of education and trying, an urban board of education, and trying to be impressive, impressive and all of these qualifications I have and experience. And back then, there used to be strikes. So I told a member, you know, all my experience in representing a school board when they had a strike, there used to be strikes. And he's, "Oh, well, you know, that's really impressive, Ms. Corrigan, but our little, our school district, we don't want to have any strikes. So can you guarantee that there aren't going to be any strikes? We don't want you to start any strikes." So that's one example of my experience.
Thank you. Okay. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
I can tell you that I recognize the difference between implementing policy and getting involved with the day-to-day operation of a school district. That's why you have a superintendent, right? And in fact, you have, you know, I don't know how much he makes, but I know how much in New Jersey, how much superintendents make. So you have somebody to do that, somebody who would have a lot more expertise than me. So that's what the difference is. I would see my job as getting involved in policy, number one. Number two, being the voice of the community. That's what I see as the fundamental difference.
Thank you. Ms. Glassman.
What do you see as our district's greatest challenges and our district's greatest strengths?
Well, the challenges that I see, like in every urban district, is providing a quality education to its students and its members of the community. Likewise, another challenge is, I understand that you have charter schools. With a charter school, you have to be, you know, whether you like it or not, there is a legislative determination that charter schools are necessary and appropriate. So it's important that, while that's important, and I think choice is important, it's also important that your limited resources be provided to individuals who live in the town. In terms of your greatest strengths, you know, just speaking to the board of fire here, Asbury Park is a, is a unique community. And it's like that, it's like that movie, Atlantic City, where they're talking about the Atlantic Ocean. There's only one Atlantic Ocean. So that's one of the opportunities you have, uniqueness of the city.
Thank you for being here tonight. What do you believe is the role of school district in educating their children?
In, the school district in educating their children?
What do you believe is the role of a school district in educating their children?
Well, the school district has the obligation to provide its children a thorough and efficient education. It's not to, it's not to take the place of the parents, but they certainly have a role in educating the children. And they also have a role when the children, when the parents can't do the job. So it plays a significant role.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we are going to, that's it, right? Yeah, that's it. Okay, so we are going to go into executive caucus and we're going to discuss. So I'll just read this before we go in. And whereas the Opening Public Meetings Act allows perjury exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting in certain matters as outlined below. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached and therefore be a result that Asbury Park Board of Education will hold a closed executive session on where I have to vote on it. This date, November 7th, 2024, At Asbury Park, for the purposes outlined, hold up, which is selecting our colleague on the school board. So make a motion to go into executive session.
A little bit. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Glassman? Dr. Maxu? Dr. Pennam? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes. Usually Adam Weiss is here and he's pretty good at timing these things. I have no idea how long it's going to take, but we're going to be short and succinct in terms of what we come up with and what come out. So hang tight. Okay, folks. So motion to commit to general session.
A little bit.
Second, roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Dr. Maxu?
Here.
Pennam?
Here.
Ms. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Will?
Here.
Okay. We reached a decision. We wanted to read Barbara Lusinski's letter into the record.
Good evening, Mrs. Brown. As you know, I will not be in attendance at tonight's special meeting. I read the applications and letters sent in response to the advertisement anticipating a board vacancy. Anthony Remy was elected by Asbury Park voters just last year and still had two more years remaining on his term. From my understanding, he has appealed a decision of removal which could ultimately be decided in his favor. He has four years of experience and is a seasoned board member. His institutional knowledge is a valuable asset in matters before his board. For these reasons, I support his appointment to the vacancy.
Okay. So we'll take nominations from the floor, or from the board.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kristen Clark to the vacancy created by the removal of Anthony Remy.
Second. Roll call. Do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robert Nichols.
Is there a second? Second. Is that it?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Then your nominations are closed.
So this is the motion to appoint Kristen Clark.
That's, that's, that's first of all.
The first person who gets to, the majority of the members remaining on the board, there are eight members remaining on the board, the first person who gets to fly will be the person who's appointed to the board.
So this is the motion to appoint Kristen Clark. Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxu?
Yes.
Dr. Pennam?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Will?
Yes.
And Ms. Clark has been, has been appointed to the board.
Okay, so now Ms. Clark gets sworn in. I don't know, what are you doing?
Okay. My outdoor voice.
Can you turn around? Mark, this is not working.
This is not working. If you can repeat after me. I, Kristen Clark, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the governments established, and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people, so help me God, I, please state your name, I, Kristen Clark, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified voter pursuant to statute, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to statute, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or events listed in NJS 18A colon 12-1 and that I will faithfully impartially perform all of the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so help me God.
All right. That's all we've got for tonight, right? When's our next meeting, by the way? Okay, 21st. Either or, be square. No pun intended. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Dr. Maxu?
Yes.
Dr. Pennam?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Mr. Rogers?
Ms. Rogers, come on.
Oh, yes.
And Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.